Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Justice for all.
Okay. Approval of leading agenda I O S.
Yes, we have added into your packet on business, 7.5, having field trip, 11.6. You have the resume. I mostly approve the agenda for March 14, 2016.
Okay. May I just go a little second to approve the agenda presented? All of the paper?
Right.
I have to buy. Approval of minutes. I move that we approve the minutes for February 22nd, 2016 and present it.
One second.
Right, any discussion? All of the paper? Correspondence.
I have none, but I'm interested, do you have something?
I do, I have an anchor note from, addressed to board members. Should I just pass it to my other? Read it? It is from our Donna Nichol and Nicole Muller. You have it in your hand, why don't you?
Go ahead, read it. Board members, Stephanie, Pete, Annie, Darrow, and Dustin. We would like to thank you for supporting job sharing. It has been a wonderful experience for us. We feel we have so much more energy to pour into our classroom as well as being there for our families. We are so grateful to all of you, along with Mr. Cahill, for giving us this wonderful opportunity. Thanks again for your support, Nicole Muller and Donna Nichol.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all correspondence I have. Good stuff. Okay. Oh, look, come on.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
That's very good. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah. Reports. So, something.
Uh, I'm just gonna turn over to some of us here to talk about DMS.
Um, so the DMS is, I don't know if it's in there.
That's why you're here tonight.
Yeah, that's why you're over here. Um, no, they've got everything pretty much ripped out. We picked out finishes for the elevator, so hopefully it's good. The asbestos removal was a little bit more than we anticipated. We had a quote for 7,400, you gave us a not to exceed 10,000. We actually did come in at 11,000, it was 95,50. But there was six layers of asbestos instead of just four, so, um, so we should have expected that. But the company was really good with us as far as not exceeding 10,000. They totally understood that and kept it under, so that's done, that's ready to go. Um, I believe we're on a little bit of a wait time right at the moment, just for the elevator, the order of it getting here and that sort of thing, but boardrooms has got everything on part and ready to go, so. I think we're making progress. So far, budget is right on with it. We had some cushion in there for things like asbestos coming over. So there's still a little bit of cushion there, so, so far, so good.
I want to remind you, on that grant, the target continues to be the elevator and the main floor. That is what, you know, high and low, so to speak, as far as money expended on that grant. So, elevator project and then, you know, finishing up the main floor as far as fitting well with the board. The board are gathered, for example, you can see what needs to be done there, so. She brought painting, flooring, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Other than that, we probably will have our, the bus park, and then the game extension to finish the inside, the sheetrocking, et cetera.
Oh, we have that.
They should finish that sheetrocking, well, the sheetrocking is done, let me take that back, the sheetrocking is done. They needed to mud in that final inspection, so I would anticipate within the next, oh, probably by the end of March, by maybe get spring break over, that and that sort of thing, we'll have that final inspection and sign off and clear it all, so. We're well within our 90 days that we have to finish, so. That's the only other thing that's been, as a soccer field, real quick, like, first way before it to dry out, before we start digging any more holes on that street, so really, we're just waiting on weather. Fence go up and finish it, get the turf in just as soon as we possibly can, because the goal is to let the high schoolers live on it. This spot, so.
It's pretty swampy down there, and it's.
That is very swampy.
Thank you. Building principal reports.
Mrs. Warren, go first, it's time, we have to talk about first lot of students who are swamped. Just don't steal my thunder, this guy.
Paul, come out here. We've been busy. My net was a seraltemus, last week I went to a luncheon there, and we're pulling out an application, they encouraged us to fill in an application for a grant for them, for their strength fundraiser. They didn't commit, but they'd like us to fill out an application, and they've decided very soon about funding for the playground project. And in the next week or so, we will have the Ford family grant application done as well, it's a little more extensive. And then, Collins McDonald assures us they'll be meeting very soon to give us a decision as well about funding. Mr. Demuth and I, and Mr. Cahill, and Mr. Denali, we're working on current asphalt bids to kind of see where those are at in January. To make sure we, because that's one of our biggest expenses, to make sure we have current figure, because the bids that we, the figure that we have was kind of like difficult, and we don't want to have an inaccurate figure. The Union School, Fremont Hay School was awarded a garden grant, it has been launched Friday. It was for 39,000, it's on, it's 100,000. So I'll be working with the grant coordinator, Amanda O'Brien, on Thursday to scale that back down to something that is definitely true in three schools, but that we can work with, so. We'll be working on that. The elementary school has always done what we call reading and math walkthroughs, where the teachers can sign up for the opportunity to watch other teachers that they really respect in the profession and watch their teaching. And we completed a series of three of them for math. We had so many teachers that wanted to watch other teachers teaching in H. New York, that we had to do three different half-days of it. And then we just completed a reading walkthrough that the E S D sponsored for our mentor teachers, for, that are mentor teachers that are new to the buildings. We just completed classified appreciation week, and between the parents' club, the district office, Mr. Cahill, myself, we provided a treat, a poster, a luncheon, something every day last week for classified appreciation week. We met last week with Mr. Prague and Ms. Harris, the sixth grade teachers, to talk about Abbott candidates for six, that are in sixth grade currently for that seventh grade year, and worked through that last week. And then, one of our, one of our other projects that we're working on by LHS DMS is we, our sixth grade teachers decided to adopt the same math curriculum with LHS DMS. Any questions?
Garden grant, since it's scaled back, that was intended for all three schools?
Well, what happened in the process of filling out the grant was, Union initiated the grant, Dustin, and then, one of the requirements of the grant was, they serve schools that had a certain percentage of free reduced lunch. Union didn't have high enough level percentage rate of free reduced lunch, but if they incorporated all three elementary schools, then they would have a high enough percentage of free reduced lunch. So the idea was, we incorporated some outdoor learning for the kiddos, Fremont Hay, but not a greenhouse. We did butterfly kids, we did some dec- composted kids, we did, um, an outdoor garden space that was just real minimal for them, but we tried to create equity between the three schools and what they could learn, they also had an outdoor reading and outdoor learning area with whiteboard. But that's how that kind of evolved.
Okay. I am just concerned with it being scaled back so much that it would take away from a quality program in which Union was strong in the spirit.
It, I can't say that it evolved, but it will, it will submit to create equity, to fill the parameters of the grant between all three schools. But it will be things like, instead of having a greenhouse with fans and propane heated year-round, it might be a greenhouse with no propane, but extends their growing season quite a bit. It might be, those might be some of the kinds of budget differences that we're looking at.
Did we provide it?
We did not. The reason being is that, well, the only thing that will really, is oversight from John and Sam, because they'll pipe in to water mains and that sort of thing, but we, we, the reason we did not is because of the fact that, um, what did Union get last year?
For 10,000 boards last year.
Thank you. For the playground out there, we donated quite a bit to Union for the playground, so this year, it will be, you know, to another school, or, you know, like Fremont, or Hay, or, not necessarily the high schools, because they got bleachers, but one of those two, so we kind of had to split up.
Kind of keep her around the wall for hay playground, is what we're like, you know. I guess I'd just be curious of what, if there is a minor thing that would help that project out that is no longer available, at least knowing what that may be. I mean, as we went to the budget cycle, I don't know if we can do it, it's just.
Right, well, and I think that they, the donor figure, did I read her email right and say it's half of what we asked for?
Maybe it's about that, but, uh, you know, in this grant, there was over 100 line items in this budget, everything's got a garden clause. And so I think there's quite a bit of room there to keep the structure intact, the greenhouse that they want is about 10,000, I think that's fine. And some of the other things the grant said, they excluded fencing because they felt like a permit structure, they didn't feel like a greenhouse, but even though it has some poor concrete around it to bolt it down. And so they're going to go to the Union Parents Club for the fencing part of that grant, but I think there's quite a bit of room in the current budget to make it a really successful project, and I'll keep you guys posted on kind of what we end up after our work sessions on budget.
Yeah, and I think we'd like to make sure that there's an awful lot of grant support for that, you know, I mean, Amanda, don't be there all her time. So, I mean, with the buy-in like that, it's nice to come on site, so, if you can lend us notes there.
And there's also an AmeriCorps grant that the CHIP program has applied for, that provides some educational support that doesn't have, that they would be funding, the CHIP program won't be funding, and they won't know that. Do you remember what the timeline was, Mr. Cahill, when we talked?
You know, I don't.
I don't either, I think it's coming up, but that would provide some of the educational pieces and the curriculum pieces that we could take out of this budget and then probably take more, but we aren't that far yet. Other questions?
Thank you.
My turn. Your turn, Mr. Prague. Well, our internet was down today, so I, I don't have enrollment figures, but some kids moved and some kids joined, so I'd say to say we're, we're, I need to let it go, and I think we're, we're okay, we're status quo.
You didn't, I thought it was the end of the school.
Was that?
You didn't count?
Yeah, I should have.
Here, your DMS is at 111, I do know this.
Well, that's right, right along.
Yeah, it was 111.
We were at 110, so.
And then, your high school. 258.
Yeah, a little bit. So, that's just right where we've been all year. We, we got some training, Ruth Ann and Brady Harris, myself, went to Portland to receive our Nike Innovation Grant, and received two days of what they call leadership college readiness training. Fabulous training at the Tiger Woods Center and Nike. The story, story with Nike is, a couple of years ago, they were looking for an innovative program to close the achievement gap in schools, to increase college and career readiness, and they, they looked at programs that, that had, you know, research-based best teaching practice and strategies, and they chose Abbott, they chose Abbott as the program they wanted to throw their money at. And, and so, they have now funded, there's 171 Abbott schools in Oregon. And I, I, we saw this three years ago before Nike jumped on board, and it's really exciting that, that now Nike has, has jumped on board, because just the, the name, the Nike name and what that brings maybe with financially, but in the, in the name of grants that they're. So, 86 schools were awarded the grant last year, and we received the, we didn't receive the Innovation Grant, we received what they call the Miller Grant, it was kind of the tail end of the funds they had left over. So we had to reapply this year, and we were one of 10 schools to receive it this year. And they renewed, they renewed the schools that got it the following year. There's, there's 171 schools now in Oregon that have, that are have Abbott. I feel like, and Ruth Ann could speak, we were in the training, which basically was year-one grant folks, and we were, we were miles ahead of where those, those folks were, in terms of what we're already doing with Abbott and Abbott school-wide, and the training that we provided with our teachers. So it's really, really exciting night. We want to pass this around, talks about the fund and what they're doing. And, and the other kind of cool thing is Nike's only doing this for Oregon teachers. And, so, they're really, they're really getting behind their state. That's what the grant's all about, it's about training these teachers, so they can make Oregon a, you know, some of the best schools and innovative schools in the country. So we're real, we're real tickled where we are with Abbott. We have with our kids, our Abbott seventh grade and eighth grade students are set to go pending your approval tonight on a field trip to University of Nevada Reno, where they're going to go down for the day. They have lined out from the School of Health and the School of Agriculture, they're getting complete tours and, and meeting with those two schools, having lunch on, served on campus in the commons, and, and getting the tour of the campus. So we're really excited about that, and UNR's been really great to work with as far as accommodating our, our kids, because not, like, not all colleges are, have been that accessible for us. So I really, really want to thank those guys for working with us. On May 2nd, Melissa Cole, who's the, the program manager for the state of Oregon, she will be in Lakeview doing a site visit for, for our school. And we're really excited about her visit, she was, she's one of the major players on, on us receiving the grant. And she has spoken about Lakeview in some of her talks to other school leaders in the state about some exciting things that we're doing school-wide. Chalice, Mrs. Young, Chalice was supposed to be here tonight to present, she's, she is having informational parents meeting. She, we've been talking about a Washington DC field trip with our social studies classes. She, she taught in Arizona prior to coming to Lakeview, and she, she was, she was a leader at her school on, and worked with a, a program that sent kids to Washington DC every year. She's having a kind of a fact-finding interest-type parents meeting, see what, what interest there is in this community. We're talking about maybe making this trip once every three years, once every, so a kid, uh, 10 through 12 has a chance to go to Washington DC if they would like to be part of that. She's, she's gone through this company, and it's a reputable company, and, and she said they're real good to work with. So she, she's gonna hold a meeting tomorrow night in the cafeteria to, to see what kind of interest there is out there. Marcia Moyer was supposed to be in Lake County this week as part of the E S D Effective Educator Training, she had to cancel due to bad weather, so she's gonna reschedule in late April. Mr. Hamilton, in Penneville, Athletic Romance.
So, spring, spring sports are upon us, we opened today track and, and golf opened at spring seasons today. Baseball and softball both open there tomorrow, tend to the league, with the weather, so we're, we're underway for, for spring sports. Excited about some of the things that are going on on the softball field, I'm sure you've been by and noticed that the infield's kind of torn up right now. Last fall, we cut out some of the infield to make it more of a regulation size, cut out some of the grass. And with doing so, obviously, that brought the need for some fill-in, and so, we were able to secure four loads of really high-end material that will drain well on our field. Baseball's able to get a load as well to help bring up their, their base paths. Softball had some money in their club account from, I don't think it was before I was even in the district, several years ago, that I think Craig Larsen put in there for that purpose, and so that's kind of an earmark, it just sat there, and so softball was able to cover two of those loads with that. And then, the district has stepped up and covered the other two loads, and then an additional load for baseball, to get those fields kind of where they need to be. So we're pretty excited about that, hopefully this weather slows down a little, so we can get that, the new material on the field. Additionally, Little League gave us $600, and the men's softball team has also given us some money to purchase a fence to put on the softball field, that is, again, more regulation size, that is comparable to the fields that we see as we travel around and play other games and go into the playoffs. So, the softball field's gonna look a little different, and we're, we're really excited about it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be very nice, be one of the best surfaces, I think, that, that you can have in Southern Oregon, old playoff, so. We're excited to get that on there and get going, so.
I read the last thing that was handed in our, so I'm not sure if I'm.
Uh, it's, because it's pictures. Just seeing if I do anybody. Finial report, thank you very much. This is balanced. All right. First up there, you should see revenue, 460,000 by our name. A little bit below what we anticipated at 487,000 for the month of January. But we're still collecting a little bit more than we anticipated for the full entire year thus far. As far as expenditures are concerned, again, our payroll is up, again, just to remind you that it's the front load of that H R A account. Our actual payroll was up just a slight little bit, or not actual payroll, excuse me, our payroll. 641,000 is what we paid, we anticipated 625,000, so again, we were over a little bit in the month of January, but we're still way ahead for year-to-date at 205,000 that we have not paid out or been anticipating to pay. Are any kind of balance right at this moment, is, or, I shouldn't say at this moment, January 31st is 3,839,736. So I'm anticipating that, well, in the year, these problems, probably, right about 1.2 million is what I'm projecting right at the moment.
Uh, old business.
We have none.
Your business, calendar.
Yes, uh, we, very fortunate to have the calendar, I'm very timely, sure, and lots of help from my mother, Rebecca, the principals, and the big contributors to the calendar are the staff. We canvassed the classified folks, the certified folks, we put those two separate calendars. One calendar wrapping up earlier in June, however, it, it cut the Christmas vacation down, I think, two, two to three days out of the Christmas vacation piece. So basically, it was basically, we can set up the staff, and I have, you know, our, who gave president here this evening, she can address that too, if she'd like to, but the staff unanimously approved the two-week Christmas vacation, along with a later release in June, so. And then, the other addition to it too is lots of absenteeism, and it's, you know, basically, our input staff was, it turns out to be kind of a waste today as far as absenteeism and everything. We put a full pay on before Thanksgiving, and it's now a full three-day Thanksgiving vacation, it's been a two and a half. So that's the other kind of big change too, so, anyway. And graduation, a little bit later, graduation will be slated for June 10th. We have a custom graduation, you know, just the way, you know, Labor Day sets and lays, but a lot of your graduations are usually done on the Friday or Saturday following the little early weekend, but that's the case in this year, so.
Well, we didn't do it last year either.
No, and, so, we started.
So will the kids actually get out to the 15th then?
Pardon?
The kids will actually be done on the 15th?
Yeah.
That'll be the last.
That'll be the last day. Last day for staff on the 16th, teachers. So Smith, your approval.
And they were all for going that late in June?
We were advised by every staff member in the district, so, anyway.
I either, I mean, I, I did not hear from everyone, I think everyone, multiple opportunities to give back to me. And so, there, I mean, there were some who went for a different option, but the majority, and it was not just like one or two, were for the two weeks at Christmas, and then that date in June, so.
I guess the unfortunate thing though is we are building a schedule that impacts a couple thousand people, not just a few staff members who'd be employed in this district, provide a service to the community.
Are you suggesting we send the calendar out to the community?
Yeah. I guess the community members, what I've heard from, one that I had to address in the early release on Wednesday, I have not heard overwhelming support of that. I know that's being overwhelmed and supported in the schools, is a good thing, but the folks I have heard from, numerous folks, is that why a Wednesday? And I guess that goes back to my conversation last year, why not on a Friday? And that is exactly what everybody has said, is why not on a Friday? And then, just the lateness of getting out the 15th, I mean, it seems.
Absolutely, I haven't heard one parent tell me that.
Oh, about the early release?
Yeah, I mean, I wish you guys could send it to me, or me.
But I, because I would, I'd like to visit with them about where they're, where they're out with that. I appreciate very much being able to have my staff together, we just wanted to. I appreciate very much being able to have my staff together. We just partner with our coaches and I know a lot of the staff coaches. And so when we do after-school meetings, they're not available to do any of that.
I, I just, it's there and I personally, as a parent, like it, but I have also heard, you know, things now.
And I'm happy to visit.
Yep.
My students.
Yeah, I just compared to where we were with the siloed, the siloed professional development to where we are now with the continuous, it's just night and day. The, the amount of training and the, the, the continuous professional development compared to what we've, we've gone through. I think it'd be a huge step backwards.
I don't think anybody's arguing about the continuous, the day. I mean, it's the same as late start Wednesday versus late, early release Wednesday versus early release on Friday.
So you're saying early release every Friday, not early, early release on Wednesday? So the, the pushback you're hearing is not that it's just at one Friday a month, it's just Wednesday versus Friday for early release?
Correct.
Okay. I do think they get, you get more teacher attendance on Wednesday versus Friday just because of the.
That's why we selected it. Losing a lot of coaches on Friday will miss the professional development. That was the rationale originally, so.
And then the parents you've heard from, is it work-related?
It's usually, yeah.
But I guess it still goes back to, I mean, how many teachers or the coaches that may be impacting on a Friday versus a Wednesday? I mean, five, four?
But that's five people out of your staff who are not in your training and you have it on Wednesday, you get everybody there and it's huge. And we're not doing the early release to inconvenience anyone. We're not doing the early release to help anyone except for the teachers. We have, we need professional development and this is the best way I have ever seen it done. For the last ten years, we've had it one whole day, random times, and it's not effective, it's not efficient. You don't get much out of it. This year, we've had it every Wednesday and it's night and day, night and day. So the early release is not for the community, it is for the teachers and it is working very well.
It is for the teachers, but you have the impact part.
But schools are not babysitters. We, we are not babysitters. Don't get me wrong, we have to take into account how it affects, um, parents. But I'm a parent and I deal with it. Other teachers are parents and they have dealt with it as well. This is the best way to make this happen. Why, um, Friday versus.
I guess, you know, I could look at, we could look at schedules, like sit down with you and look at the schedules and all the events that we do on Friday and how that would impact our participation.
Well, I guess, I'm wondering too, what, so Friday, if it's early on Friday versus Wednesday, then they have it.
It extends the weekend and there's some benefit to the, the families versus just middle of the, kids are out of school or they're doing whatever they don't. I guess my question to you all would be, do you have a hundred percent attendance on Wednesday?
We, we have, as far as scheduled events, Wednesday is probably the, one of the best days of the week.
But I'm asking, do you have a hundred percent attendance on early, early release for staff?
Well, we have, we have soccer during the fall, we have soccer game, soccer games are played on Wednesday. So those, those days where they're away, we have a staff there coaching soccer that's gone.
So you're making my point that whether it's Wednesday or Friday, you're gonna have people miss it.
Well, I would say there's, there's, there's more than just athletics that we, you know, we also, even on a home, home game. Okay, whether our team's gone, Fridays, if we're hosting a football game, we're, we're not available to be in training. We need to be getting ready for that event. If we're hosting a basketball game, we can't conduct a training because we're getting ready for an event. Those things, we, we, we have to be there.
Which is more than coaches, that's.
A lot more than coaching.
All of our staff does.
That's what I'm saying. It's a lot more than just a few coaches being gone on some away games.
But when you do, there's a game right now, a home game, a football or basketball, when do you start those preparations for that event?
He usually goes down there by two o'clock, two-thirty.
And early release?
We have teams in our building, we have visiting teams in our building at two-thirty.
Or earlier depending on their travel time and attendance, because I posted them at Union early. When they come in early, they'll call me and I leave the building on Friday to go out and unlock the Union Gym or hold the, the teams out there. It wraps in, things like that because it's a team effort during basketball season especially.
And if you have it on Fridays, you're gonna have not only the coaches who might be gone, you're also gonna have other people who are scheduling doctor's appointments or family trips and then they're gonna be gone from the training because they see it as expendable. They don't need to be there, I don't have kids, I can, I can be gone, which is making your point, okay? Because you're saying that it would, it would be for families, extend the weekend.
Well.
It's gonna do the same thing for teachers and then that professional development is out of the door.
So the teachers are taking off early now on Fridays?
No, I'm saying if they, I'm saying. I'm saying if there's professional development, they're gonna see that as I don't have to make sub plans, I can schedule a doctor's appointment and I don't have to plan extra.
With the shortage of subs and the amount of time that Steve and Jesse and I are spending in the classroom covering the lack of subs, our teachers lots of times, if they can schedule a doctor's appointment during a non-contact time for their kids, they will do that because they don't want to be out in the classroom if the kids are in the classroom. And so they're very good and they're, and they are very dedicated to their students in, in scheduling those times when they can. So for instance, if they have a great day, half great day, they will work at night to make sure their grades are done. So if they can schedule a doctor's appointment on the half great day because we cannot find subs.
But you're not telling me though that they're doing, they're taking off early on Fridays now to do appointments out of town. So if we're paying them now to be there till Friday and the end of the shift, why won't they be there on Friday during their shift when we're paying them to be there for professional development?
You're still gonna pay them. They're gonna take a sick, sick day, which is completely legitimate. They, they have a doctor's appointment and they're gone and they have a doctor's appointment.
I'm gonna lay my cards on the table. I will not support this calendar with an early release on Wednesday.
Dustin, we are in line with Clamath County and City. They all do release Wednesdays, if the release one doesn't really start, one doesn't wait.
I understand. I've talked to people over there.
And I have, I've talked to Chris, the director of Clamath County and he, that was his sixth, because it was Wednesday.
We just have less absenteeism because people try to.
I think, I think all they might have on the table, that's, that's a giant step backwards, even if we change dates. Because now we, we chose Wednesdays, we need to stick with that. Because now we're just, we're just messing with, with something that we, we've gotten folks used to. So we change, we start changing that every year.
We went into this plan last year on this calendar as a trial, if I do recall, try something different. And if we're not truly a trial, but this is what we really want, I don't see why we can't move, okay, yes. These early release days were great for us. This constant contact in professional development worked well. Why can't we have another trial that says, okay, let's try it on Friday and see is this anecdotal evidence really that? Or are we having issues with attendance and other things?
I just don't know.
And then go back to next year.
What I can do, Dustin, besides showing you a calendar and telling you Fridays are not good here for professional development. Friday afternoons are the worst day to do professional development at this school. And I don't know what more I can tell you for you to believe me, besides show you calendars, follow me around on a Friday afternoon, home or away, people out of the building, covering classes, setting up for events, Friday is the worst day of the week to do it.
And I don't, personally, I mean, I don't think an hour on Friday, if it's the, it, uh, if it's the principle of the thing, then I see the one hour on Friday is better for some parents and some students than early release on Wednesday. But if I need to go home, if, if they can go anywhere, an hour on Friday is, is not, you know, that is not a. So I, I see that in this, if this is for our teachers and staff, unless you're gonna go back to full day Fridays where they have it completely off or you, you start to look at completely different schedules, like a four-day week, which was a no-go, that was a studied and looked at and tabled. So, um, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying and that our job is to represent the public and the students that aren't here to speak for themselves. So I guess, I mean, we could, uh, we could, I mean, I'm really delighted that we had input from the staff. I appreciate that very much because I, they're the ones that are impacted work-wise.
When we have the early releases on Wednesday, a lot of our training is information that we are implementing on Thursday. So we practice added stuff, um, we work on, this year it is our, our impact on minimizing bullying. And then Thursday, we have a SWAT, we have a SWAT meeting with our classes. And those run seamlessly because we've given the teachers their training, they have their lesson and they use those strategies. Then they practice them in their SWAT class and then the ability to use those strategies in other classes that they teach are directly impacted. And so if we go to our training on Friday, we are unprepared for the Thursday before. So then we have to further switch scheduling to make that work better. And I, I don't see, I don't see how we can really scoop upon what we already have going. The Wednesday, again, the Wednesday training lets us be ready for Thursday. And, and because the teachers use the strategies in class on Thursday, the chances of them using that in their regular classes, I think, dramatically go up. And that's the whole point of the professional development. How can you learn strategies and then put those into practice immediately? And this schedule allows us to do that for the benefit of the students.
And we would lose a significant number of days that they would have professional development if we did it on Friday because we have the days that you can make up for for conferences, that that's a Friday off. We get our great day and professional development day and that's a Friday off. We have our, the way Thanksgiving falls for our holidays, we lose like six days.
Well, I think, you know, some of the programs that we are, have, the RTI, ADD, um, PBIs are ongoing. I mean, they are continuous training programs that fit with this, what we're doing. So I mean, we're, we're with the early release Wednesday, we're at least supporting the programs that we're advocating our teachers to do.
And we've gone through it this year and we found that it has proven successful as far as really truly advancing our professional development. Because as we stated, a lot of it is the uninterrupted time.
Right.
Due to Friday events, holidays, early release, upper release days, make-up days on conferences and, you know, it's just the gamut of things as far as it goes, so. And I think it was very helpful, you know, the swapping their release days or remember those, as we've announced, those professional development days. And we, we'd meet like in October, we'd have a met professional development day and then we wouldn't come back together again until December. And I'll tell you by the time you have two months in between, you've forgotten what you covered in that one day. This is ongoing, concurrent and, you know, we live it every week, you know, we keep it going and it is improving our schools. One comment.
Yes, sorry for the motion.
I move that we approve the two thousand sixteen seventeen L, Lake County's number seven calendar as presented.
I, I, um, so my thoughts are, I just think that we're going off early for June. Is there any way?
You have a hundred and ninety-day contract for the teachers, you have nine hundred and ninety seat hours for students. So you have to, you have to factor that in if you start after Labor Day and you want that much vacation time.
Right.
And we sat there, we counted every day to make sure we were compliant, so we had one hundred and ninety, another one hundred and ninety contract days plus the student seat time in order to comply with the Division twenty-two standards.
Have we ever booked conferences in before Thanksgiving? Because it's a short week anyway. I mean, it's not gonna make a huge difference, it's just a little small suggestion. That one Friday that we have off for conferences, what if they had the conferences on the Tuesday and then that Wednesday, that was. Because they're already not having school and they're, they're in a short week, which is hard to build momentum.
November's choppy, doesn't it?
It's really choppy, but that would.
The floating veterans day. And we thought about that, we actually, we looked at that.
So you.
It really came down to the elementary school, wouldn't be at school all, all week.
Either one day.
One day, one day that week.
But it's so choppy anyway. That's a small suggestion and maybe it's not this year.
At least they're in school a couple, at least a couple days each week.
Why would you have to wonder at attendance at conferences too?
Yeah, that's a big break and we have over, we're at a ninety-five percent conference attendance rate for the elementary.
And November, November's on.
It would be early.
The thing that's killed us the last two years, we've had a late Labor Day. We can go back now in the next few years to an earlier Labor Day, which will bump everything forward and then life will be good for a few years.
Yeah.
And then we'll readdress this here in a few years.
Yeah.
Well.
So, I mean, it, it fluctuates and it always, like, and we've gone through this before. You have to make it up somewhere, so you make it up in vacation. We did that last year, we shortened our Christmas break. And then got out earlier this year, but the teachers, I mean, this is partially, this is their calendar. And I think, you know, we had complaints about, oh, the Christmas break is too short. Well, if to make that up, we add a few days at the end of the year, that's just what we have to do this year. I mean, we, we, unless we start pulling days out, and we can't. And I, I think you guys have done a good job of trying to chop through what works and you're never gonna get a complete consensus, so you shoot for.
I just wanted my two cents.
And then I'll talk, Dustin, it's been a debate for years and years to try to start school before Labor Day weekend. And, you know, with the tradition of, you know, roundup and the fair and everything else and we, we've, you know, got a lot of negative response ever thinking about that.
One thing that, I guess one thing that was in two thousand fifteen that stood us up in the Christmas break was Christmas was on Friday, this year it's on Sunday, but the leap year made a two-day difference versus a typical Monday. I agree that break was off for long.
Christmas?
At least a mic.
Yeah, that was the, that was the option B, that had a shorter period, had us going to school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday every week. And they still let teachers come back that next week though, for, for a day. Yeah. Yeah, still put this in that third.
If I was to stall, they will be sadly.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
No, we're just kind of mixed up in our discussion.
Really mixed up.
I know.
I think if you don't, the only option with Labor Day being so late to get out earlier, because even if you take two or three days out of December, you're still gonna be in that week of June. So then you're looking at starting before Labor Day. So, and like Will said, that is, that's a, that's not a discussion for this evening. You know, there's lots of schools that do.
Yes, there are.
And there is, Tulley Lake has a fair one week later than ours, they start.
Yeah, birds, you have birds and you have.
Yeah.
And, and I guess if, I, I look at that as if this was an annual issue where we're concerned about the Christmas break for getting out late and every year is that way, then I'd say we really need to address the fact that we should start earlier. The fact that it, it's always been after fair and it just is something that reoccurs kind of every few years. I don't know if we want, I don't know if we want to approach that.
Because you're right, as soon as Labor Day's early again, it's a, so, so I'll second. Okay, so let's move to second then to approve the calendar as presented. Do I dare ask if there's any more questions? Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. And again, I want to say thank you for soliciting input because I know that in the past, we've had, we've had questions that come up and we don't have any data from teachers, I appreciate it. Secondary math textbook adoption.
Mr. Krunk. Yeah, I apologize, I thought we were gonna have some materials on math teacher here, but we have decided, page one oh nine, my mentor, Mr. Gayle, on the Larson's Big Ideas map for grades seventeen, twelve. And I put a, the quote from the publisher is attached. And we're really tickled that the sixth graders, because it's, it's basically the adoption is a nine, twelve, six, seven, eight. And having the sixth graders adopt also the Big Ideas is exciting to our math folks because of that, that transition, that seamless transition in their math coming up from, from the elementary school. Seventh grade is always kind of a tough year, our scores are always, take a big hit, our math scores as seventh graders because of that adjustment. So we're, we're excited that the sixth grade and the elementary folks down there have joined this with a, with a true six through twelve, you know, same curriculum. And Mark Louis, Teah, Paul, Noni Vandenberg, myself, went to, as part of the textbook caravan and looked at several different publishers, and they're real excited about, Noni actually changed her mind and went with this.
I move that we approve waiver for math textbook adoption for grades kindergarten through fifth grade. Or, or the two, oh, I'm... That's okay. Well, then I move that we approve the secondary math textbook adoption as presented.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the secondary math textbook adoption. Do we have any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, with our thanks to the committee for all that research. You know, that is time consuming.
Good, good folks.
Elementary math textbook adoption.
I am also excited that the sixth grade teachers weren't quite sure where the high school was going because Noni kind of had some questions there at the end, but they are quite as far along that they have decided to join the high school. So I have a, a mentor asking for permission to adopt Big Ideas math at Roll Larson with the seventh and eighth grade, and we'll get pledge figures to miss out just as soon as I have them.
That was a question I had, what?
And your motion's part two.
I have two, part one. Okay. I have a waiver written here too, I didn't know if we needed to make that, because I have a question. And the second part of the second motion is that the K-5 teachers are requesting to continue engage New York Math for next year, preserving the right to adopt a new math curriculum in two thousand seventeen eighteen for that school year. Your questions about that, you might have some questions about that.
We start the reading motion.
Here, we add another one.
So it's included in that motion.
Okay.
Budget, oh.
Okay, I'll wait till the discussion.
Yeah.
I'll do it right. I move that we approve the waiver for math textbook adoption for grades kindergarten through fifth grade. And that we approve the sixth grade math textbook adoption as presented. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the waiver and then approve the sixth grade math textbook adoption. Any discussion, question? I wonder how, do we just carry that, that amount then that's in the budget for the adoption to next year? Do we, we have as a placeholder in your budget, because it's budget, correct, for an adoption this year?
For an adoption this year. Um, we anticipate about two hundred fifty thousand to be put in the budget this year.
For the whole K-12?
For the whole K-12.
For sixteen, seventeen, or fifteen, sixteen?
For sixteen, seventeen.
But then that will go, it will be reduced down to sixteen and...
Whatever we do, whatever we do, four, five adoption in, in that next year. It was kind of interesting when we went through this process, the K-5 teachers were unanimous in that they would like to give this program another year, they'd like to look at their smarter balance scores so they have something to compare to from last year and to see how much growth they're getting. They're very pleased with the math growth they're seeing, their CPM results. And they just didn't see anything else there that had the rigor that they were excited about, so they kind of wanted to... The plan is that we continue to investigate their school districts, and we earmark several of them with very high smarter balance scores for the first year. But we want to track those districts for another year, and then look at the math programs that they're using and revisit this again next spring and see where we're at, but we really want to make a good decision.
As long as we have funds to honor the waiver, you know, but that doesn't go away, so that when they do need math...
What happens if we take into consideration in the year that, that it would happen? So this year, we initially said, okay, well, how do you about two hundred fifty thousand fall away? But that just gets reduced down, because those, the budget funds don't really carry over, you...
We just do it again.
Just, just kind of budgeting here.
It's not actual figures.
Right.
They have a placeholder in there, yes, but if you're not adopting in that year, you know, I mean, unless you anticipate a shortfall, or you're anticipating something in the budget say it's a new biennium and the biennium's gonna reduce, which we don't know that till the last minute generally. Then you might want to earmark, okay, actually, two hundred fifty thousand or whatever the number is to hold back to be put into that biennium, you know?
I'm just thinking, because we do adoptions every seven years. So if we waive it one year, we can still, we'll be off of our seven year cycle, but that's okay. Right. I'm assuming since you're asking us to do it, but I just want to make sure that we have it written down.
Yep.
Yep.
Got it. What's that?
I just wanted to add extra.
We're saving.
Oh, you have this big block, but...
Yeah, I should use this for...
Yep.
Especially a bubble every time, huh?
Okay, so, see, I, Bill, I have one question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. With our thanks to your committee of teachers. Request to cancel March twenty-eighth, regular board.
Well, traditionally, the second word being usually falls on spring vacations, and this, this year, of course, it isn't. But my two key staff members who helped me generate this board agenda and put everything together, those two are sitting right here, are both, I'm not on vacation, I'm in the office all week, but these two are on vacation, so... Anyway, which I wish them well, good times, and everything else. But I decided it would be best to go ahead and cancel the March twenty-eighth meeting with your permission. And if there's nothing really pressing at this time, we can't move to that first.
You'll have your own July rock.
That's my recommendation.
Okay. Do we have to have a motion to do that?
Yes.
Because it is a regularly scheduled, it was scheduled to begin with the year, okay? It's on the calendar. I'll make the motion to cancel March twenty-eighth, due to the schedule, regular board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Excellent. Well, I guess you can help. Motion carries, thank you.
Let me show you.
Eleven point five, amendment calling to...
Now, before you move into consent agenda, I promised Rebecca I'd never do this, but I have to make one on page one hundred and twenty-one. That's the rule list.
We're on eleven five.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, do that. Eleven, six, one, five.
I, well, okay, so I guess this is you, eleven five.
Yeah. Just, this is, we've already talked about this a little bit, just the, yeah, the field trip, who have the opportunity to do Monday, April eleven, for something for your approval to go as it is out of state. It isn't the biggest little city in the world, but...
Awesome.
Take it down, there's gonna be a great opportunity for them.
What was the date? April eleven, Monday, April eleven.
Basically, Baker.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, really early and then get back by noon.
That, uh...
I'm sure you've worked on it.
Yeah. It might be that day.
No.
Is that when the field biology trip is? No, that was April, November, after five. I think it's a point...
My chaperone?
Go down, roll that bell.
That sounds great.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for the Abbott field trip to Reno on April eleven.
Awesome. Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the filter business paid for without a...
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Eleven point six, board member resignation approval.
For Senator Porter, Mr. Anderson has resigned. I will read it to your board members after a great deal of thought, because I've decided to resign my position on the Lake County Schools' six, seven board directors, effective immediately. Due to work conflicts, I have been unable to attend several work sessions and meetings. My present schedule doesn't continue to happen in the near future. I'm currently working on projects that take time away from my office. For this reason, I feel it's best for my business and family as well as for the board to resign. I've enjoyed working with the board and time spent helping to make our schools a better place for students and faculty. I will continue to support the Lake County Schools' students in their endeavors sincerely, Darryl J. Anderson. I would say this, Mr. Anderson has been on this board for many years, I've been in the district twenty-two years, and he's, I imagine he's probably getting through more of the rule.
Just the certificate.
He did take some time off, both years, let's be clear.
I think it was seventeen or eighteen, I think certificate did. Yes. Long.
He has been a valuable board member, you know, he has contributed much of his time to our facilities and projects. He provides wonderful insight in our policy decisions and everything else. And has extended a lot of praise to the great work of Darryl Anderson for this board, for this school district, for this community. And he will be very much in our board and this...
A lot of experience. So do we have to?
Except for...
To extend. Oh. Good. So no doubt, you gotta show up.
I'll make the motion to approve the resignation from Darryl Anderson from the board.
Awesome, yeah. Okay, so it's moved and seconded to accept Mr. Anderson's resignation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With our sincere thanks and appreciation. Pretty sure we're shocked. Okay, so...
Okay, now we'll track.
Consent agenda?
Page one twenty-one, the renewal, we're on renewal list. Mrs. Chavez, there are folks that maybe share or wear separate hats, even their profession. Lauren Chavez is counselor, and we forgot to put special education administrator on that line beside her name, so... She served half time in that, half time counselor this year. If we approve that change last year, so, and that's an oversight on our part. As I think I'm gonna make sure that that was on there this evening, so, I'm better, it's good for consent approval.
What's your figure?
I will move that we approve the consent agenda.
Yes, with the addition of the special administration to...
From Lauren Chavez, clarifying her not only as counselor, but special administrator, correct. So it's a...
All those in favor of the consent agenda with the amendment made to the contract rule list? I, I, motion carries. Uh, announcements?
I have to...
Any announcements?
I would like to say one, that's a... I would, as the coordinator of the elementary basketball league, I would like to thank the school, specifically, Jesse and Susan, for their coordination and assistance in making our school accessible this year.
Well, well, for you.
Very well appreciated.
Takes a lot of coordination to get everybody...
It's a pretty refined process.
It's a better system. On behalf of what, we don't say?
Elementary basketball.
I guess I will say something too, I was quite my accident, I attended the ski team awards, dessert party night, and it was, it was a wonderful event, it was a very happy accident for me, and, and wonderful awards, the team had a fantastic year. My kudos to the coaches and very, very nice event, so... So you can see, I like accidents like that, that was really good. I have this double medal and dessert. The dessert was very good too, I wanted it, that was one dinner, it was a dessert. I did have dessert. Send me a pamphlet, son. I will take care of it.
Yes, ski team had excellent game.
Yeah, very nice, so...
Any other announcements? Um, next board moving agenda items, which isn't until April, April eleven.
April eleven.
April eleven. We have a things and work session that we'll have to do. We'll commission your devices for self-evaluation, you'll have to set goals and then do your final talk panel on everything, make sure it's all written up if you want it, and then we have to do the superintendent evaluation. So that was scheduled for March twenty, so we don't have to take it all out, so... Shouldn't be too difficult, what you guys had and approved, but you'll still have to put numbers together on that. So we've got those two things and work session.
Did you have those two policies written back?
I don't think we'll have, I don't think we'll have six or five then, because we'll have to send letters out. Hopefully we'll have them in the flag and in the town.
I believe we were supposed to have Randy Harris here this evening with sweat, we'll overlook that, but we'll get caught here on the...
No, she, I guess she's going to mail.
No. But then we'll work again, so...
Do you have a recommendation for me as a budget creator, or also on the...
There are probably discussions as far as who we're going to elect as possible candidates for board.
Any more? Okay. The chairman?